My family, thank y'all for joining me on another episode of Abandoned Voices. Joining me today is the lovely councilwoman elect, it's Cynthia Nguyen.
Cindy Nguyen.
Cindy Nguyen.
That's right, Cindy Nguyen.
So, is it still councilwoman elect?
Yeah, still there until May the seventh.
Oh, alright.
Still May the seventh.
After May the seventh, then it's just councilwoman.
That's council, but it's still Cindy Nguyen.
Oh, alright.
Yeah.
Still Cindy Nguyen.
Yep.
So what's going on Ms. Nguyen?
Let me tell you, it's been busy while first of all, I was, you know, being elected to this seat. Whereas I take this job very seriously, very seriously. It's a passion of mine, serving the community. Yeah, I came back to New Orleans eighteen years ago. Not sure if you know that or not, but my family has been in New Orleans since nineteen seventy-five. I came over when I was about five years old from Vietnam. And, um, growing up in New Orleans in the eighties at that time, my parents kinda felt like, you know what, you're, you know, I was a rebel when I was a little kid. Yeah, I was like cutting school, doing everything, uh, kids do, you know. Uh, but one thing that I was very fortunate to have was that my parents, like, you know what? This gotta stop, so we're gonna ship you away for a minute or two, so they sent me away.
They'll put you in control, huh?
Exactly, and so I'm really grateful for that guidance, you know, um, in, in, in my life. Um, and so my, I actually went to school in Texas, Missouri City, Texas. Then I left and then I went up to Milwaukee, Wisconsin. And then I came back, uh, and I came back because, you know, I got kicked out of two schools.
Hold up, so you got kicked out of schools?
I got kicked out of school, so cut school, yeah, been there, done it, know it, been it all. But you know, I've always say that, you know, a person, when a person go through challenges in their life, it's how, what happens at the end?
Exactly.
You know, what do they take out of it?
Sometimes challenges make you better.
Oh, my god, it makes you stronger. Oh, oh, my god, you know, and, and because of that, you know, I, uh, so I came back into New Orleans. I, you know, was gonna finish up in high school here, so I left when I finished, when I started high school. And I came back, um, you know, went to say to read high.
To read?
Yeah, I went to read for seven days, seven days, seven days.
Longer than me, I went for, I think, three days.
Really? You didn't like it?
I went to Avison, I left Avison and went to read for a little while, trying to follow my cousins and, but it wasn't my type.
What year was that?
I was in, uh, ninety-nine or two thousand.
Well, I'm a little bit, I'm a decade, uh, essentially, yeah, a little bit older than you, so I was in there in the eighties, so around eighty-eight, eighty-nine.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, and so, and then it didn't work out for me, so I thought I was gonna just drop out of high school, just get, get a J O B and call it a day.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
The guy had the plans for you, huh?
Yeah, I, yeah, there was bigger plan for me that I wasn't aware of, but I was very fortunate that I, you know, followed the plan. You know, many time when they, when plan is laid out for you and you're just like, nah, I don't think that's the plan, you know? But at that time, I was like, I got nothing to lose, really didn't have anywhere to go, didn't wanna go back to read. And, you know, I was, you know, slightly a little bit young and my parents was like, I don't care what you do, but you gotta get your high school degree. You gotta get that, so I was like, okay, so then I ended up moving to Monticello, Iowa. So, I ended up graduating, so first of all, I graduated as a junior from Monticello, uh, high.
And what is it, what city is it?
It's in Iowa, like, up north. Yeah, up north, um, let me tell you, the best thing that ever happened to me, those people up there are so disgustingly nice. That you couldn't be bad, you know, you couldn't be bad at all, and so kinda got, you know, got my mind straight. You know, graduated from high school, then I came back and I'm like, you know what? I'm straight, I got my high school degree and that's all my parents wanted. And then, uh, when I lived in Iowa, I used to live with this American couple. So they actually helped my family when we first came to America in nineteen seventy-five. And I reconnected with them when I didn't have a place. And so, so they told me, they go, when will you come up here and stay with us? And I'm like, oh, okay. And, and that's how, you know, I came up to Iowa, um, and then after I graduated, I came back to New Orleans. I said, well, you know, I'm gonna go get a job, hang out with my, my people and kinda do my thing. And two weeks, I was born. Two weeks, two weeks, and I was like, oh, lord, is this like this gonna be all the time? I'm like, no, it can't be. So then I find myself flying back to Iowa and going to college. College was not part of my plan, was not part of my plan at all, didn't think that I could, my parents could afford it. But, um, with my scholarship and the assistance that I received up in Iowa, I was able to, um, I graduated with a bachelor's degree in social work. Yeah, nineteen ninety-three from Lawrence College in Dubuque, Iowa. So only Asian girl on campus, predominantly all white, and then we had like maybe five blacks. So, um, and again, spending four years up there, you know, I was able to get away from New Orleans, see things.
See things.
See things and it's like, man, you know, it looks good up here, why can't we have it in New Orleans? Right?
Right, yeah.
So after graduating.
Exactly.
Yeah, after graduating, I came back to New Orleans, then I got married, moved to Texas, things didn't work out. Uh, I think four years later, I moved back to New Orleans, that's, so that's now eighteen years ago when I moved back. And when I came back, I was just like, you know what, why is my, why is the community still the same way when we first came to America? You know, the Vietnamese com- uh, community was kinda siloed in their own area. The black community is one area, the white community is in one area, and I was like, well, you know what, we should all be integrated.
Exactly.
We should all be able to, you know, cross paths because we can learn from each other. You know, and so that's when I decided to start, um, my work in the nonprofit field. And that's when I started a community center.
So, so you saw a problem and you actually, instead of talking about it, you did something.
I love, let me tell you, I could talk, uh, people ear off. I love talking, but I also believe in getting things done. Talking doesn't really do anything. It, it sets the foundation of what we need to do, I get that, but there's a limitation in reference to how much time do we keep investing in talking? You know, and so when I recognized there was such a disconnect, I just like, well, you know what? Let's just do something about it. I really didn't know what I was doing, to be very honest. I just got into the nonprofit field, maybe a few months prior to me deciding to do this on my own. And I just kinda took the leap, leap of faith, you know? I mean, you guys, you know that nonprofit, you know, nonprofit, you don't make money, you know? Um, it's basically, it's, you know, you gotta groom it on your own.
And hopefully get some donations, stuff like that.
And rights, grants.
Let me ask you a question, I know I should know this, but what is that for the councilwoman? I mean, I know the mayor is and the governor, but I think a council, I think somebody just, you know, do a lot of negotiations and talking and helping situations.
This is my opinion of a councilperson. A councilperson, first of all, is elected by the people of that district. And so just with that alone, so that person should be the voice of the people. Now, many times when you have different projects, there will be different voices, right, within your own district. But then at the end of the day, as a councilperson, I believe that there, that the person should do, should be able to, should set up processes to where, try to bring both sides together. Sometimes it works, sometime it doesn't, and I get that, but at the end of the day, making sure that people, voices are being heard. And, and at the end of the day, you know, of course, as a councilperson, I would have to make a decision. But I know that the decision that I will be making for the district will always include the people's voice. It may not include your voice because your, the decision that I made may not be what you wanted, but I've listened, I've heard you.
Can't please everybody.
I can't please everybody, but, and I think that's where the city councilperson needs to do, and then looking at improving the quality of life. Looking at what, and leveraging resources to where we could get things done. We can't, I'm the type of person that, you can't depend on the federal government or the city government for everything.
Right.
You as an individual, as a citizen, need to also to contribute to the growth of your own community. If we don't have, if you don't have ownership of your own community, then why do you expect others to invest into your community?
So, let me cut you off for that.
Nah, go ahead.
You like, like over like the New Orleans East area?
So District E is, is the east, the L nine, which I call, is the Low Nine. And then Venetian Isle, which is, so we're like a seventy-five miles district, the largest district in the city of New Orleans. So I have over eighty-six thousand, some people may say we're now close to ninety thousand residents, um, uh, in District E. We're actually the largest, um, uh, district, we're like the size of Lake Charles.
Wow.
Yeah, so that kinda give you some sort of dimension of the district.
So if I had a, a problem like with, uh, with something, like, uh, give me an example of, uh, what, what I, what would I call you with, like, when people say, call you councilwoman, call your, your city people?
I'll, I'll give you some examples that I've already received calls. Well, the school system is actually, yeah, no, you would, you would wanna call your representative for the Orleans Parish School Board. Or you wanna work with the, uh, the CEO, because right now we have charter, so you know, the educational system has changed slightly, a little bit after Katrina.
Yes, it is.
So we're more charter than direct run by, by, uh, by an entity that is being, by Orleans Parish School Board, which their board members are elected to the seat by the people. And I think that's where the disconnect from, for some resident is that some schools are not held accountable to the people. Yeah, because they're now a independent charter school that is run with an independent, uh, governing body. Yeah, but for like trash, you know, I get calls, I, I get calls about trash that's on the, on the district and while I don't.
Like when people be dumping, like, the mattresses hanging out there.
You saw that, right?
So I'll call you for that?
Yeah, but I think, I think that you want, first of all, you wanna call three-one-one, you know, you wanna call.
Three-one-one, what's that?
Three-one-one is kinda like a, a line that is set up through the city for people to cause, it's kinda accountability, so that way.
I never knew that.
Yeah, so three-one-one, so like that mattress, we could call three-one-one and say, there's two mattresses is off of Chef. And, you know, they were more than likely contact sanitation to come pick it up, yeah. But if everybody does that, then it, and it's, three-one-one is, like I say, is an accountability, so that way, city government can say, well, we did get that phone call. So it's all recorded when you call, they give you a case number.
Never knew that, three-one-one.
Three-one-one, um, it's kinda like a hotline when you, when you think about it, but I think the challenge that we have with that hotline is that, some people feel like three-one-one doesn't address their issue, no one follow up, and so that is gonna be one of my thing that I wanna do as a city councilperson, is to make sure that three-one-one and city government agency are held accountable. Yeah, and I think that's also a role for city councils to make sure that we don't do everything. You know, our, our team is very small, I will have a team of about four people on my team, yeah, so you can see it's not that large. So what, I believe what we have to do is we have to work with an agency that's already in place, that is actually funded through our tax dollar to make sure that they're providing quality services to our citizens in the city of New Orleans.
Okay.
Yeah, so, but then other stuff that, you know, I believe that city council can also work on is developing, um, ideas and strategies to improve the quality of life, you know?
And so, so you, you have, hold your seat for four years, how that works?
So it's, it's a four-year term and I'm, uh, I am allowed to run again for a second term, which will give me eight years.
So basically you got eight years, kind of, eight years.
Yeah, well, I don't go in and say, you know, I'm gonna have eight years, I'm definitely gonna work my butt off. Um, I definitely want to make sure that people are being representative, and I believe that if I focus on my job, on representing the people and getting things done, um, I believe that, that, uh, another four year will be granted to me by the people of District E. You know, because I mean, this seat is, uh, is, is a very humbling position to be in. Uh, I think in the past, people just automatically assume that they don't have to do anything, they're gonna be automatic, um, you know, uh, reelected. Uh, I believe that the people in the city of New Orleans are not putting up with that no more, and so you just can't go in and just enjoy the ride, like I would say, and expect to come back for another term, for another term.
So for the, the other, uh, like council people, for like the other districts, do you guys ever like get together and work on like a big plan for the New Orleans period?
So we actually, so we're now, we're still in our transition phase right now, so we.
You say May?
May seventh, but we have been meeting at C C Coffee every Tuesday morning, so we meet every mo- every Tuesday, every week, um.
That's the other district leaders?
Yeah, yeah, we, I meet with the others, and I just had coffee with them this morning.
How many is the total, like?
So there's a total, there will be a total seven of us, so you have five city council district, and then you have two at large. The two at large basically represent the entire city.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah, so I just, I represent District E.
A district, alright.
So there's A, B, C, D, and E.
Okay, and that cover, like, new, just New Orleans Parish?
Orleans Parish.
Not New, but Orleans Parish.
Yeah, Orleans Parish. So, uh, and we met, like I say, we met this morning, I am actually, will be hosting a tour of my city council colleagues on next Tuesday, March the thirteenth, I'm gonna show them my district. I want them to see.
So they ride around and get this?
Yeah, I'm, we're gonna ride, we got a bus, and we're gonna ride around from the L nine to Venetian Isle, down Almanza, down Chef into the east, and then we'll land up and have lunch at, uh, the New Orleans East Hospital. You know, I want them to see the district, I want to see, to understand what people.
You gotta have that, that hands-on, that hands-on contact, that visual to.
Yeah, 'cause you know, many time when you don't see it, you don't know what a person is talking about. And it's hard to advocate if you don't really have that visual aid.
And I know, all the, now that I'm thinking about it, Orleans, the east and the Low Night War gotta be the, almost the toughest too.
Yeah, we've had.
Because, you know, they're definitely most damaged after Hurricane Katrina.
Most dam- most damaged and, and we believe, and I also believe, that we're a district that has not received the attention that it deserves.
Yeah, I grew up in these.
Oh, do you?
Yeah, born and raised out here in New Orleans, so I know all about this area, from Michigan to, to Darwin.
Okay.
I know all about these, and it's not nowhere near what it was.
Yeah, it, you know, we, you know, District E has great potential, we're prime for, for development. We, as you could, just driving around, you can see the massive land that we have available. And so there's definitely growth, there's actually areas for improvement. Um, I, I just believe that with me coming in, that I, economic development will be something that I will aggressively, uh, att- uh, address to make sure that there's positive, you know, uh, development, not just any type of development, but also creating that environment that we are open for business.
Exactly.
Right? We are open for business, don't be shy if you have an idea and you got money, you wanna invest, I am definitely gonna open those doors.
Open for business and invest in, walk off of Jazzland, to get Jazzland back up and running.
Yeah, so, yeah, so the Jazzland theme park is, definitely is an eyesore for now going on thirteen years. I met with the Industrial Development Board yesterday, and I really believe that with the changing administration in City Hall and with a new council, I really believe that there will be opportunities that will open up, that we will see some real action will take place, um, on that property. I would love to see some sort of family entertainment environment. Uh, it is a large piece of land, you're talking about close to two hundred acres.
I went there a few times when it's up and running.
Were you?
Yeah.
Yeah, my husband used to work for Jazzland, you know, and he worked for Six Flags too when, you know, he.
Yeah, he turned to Six Flags, I believe, uh, not too long after it was Jazzland, I think Six Flags brought it.
Yeah, so it, it, that area is really prime for growth. I really believe is that we just gotta put together a diverse group of developers that is gonna re- really lift that, that area up, and that's gonna be able to sustain its operation as well. We don't want a group to come in, or groups to come in and, and with their ideas and, and they do everything and then they go out of business three years later. You know, it, you know, if we waited for thirteen years, I believe that, but we shouldn't be waiting any much longer. I think thirteen years is long enough.
Long enough.
Yeah, we waited long enough already, and so we really need to move on it, uh, move it on it in, in mind of growth for the community. Because if you drive around that area now, it's, it's dirty, you know, we need development. When you have development that comes in and you put them accountable and you structure it in a way where it is a business corridor, neighborhoods would definitely benefit from their business corridors. We just haven't done a good job at structuring those type of environment to where you, the business community could have a true partnership with community and the residents here. And so, and that's what we're gonna be about and, you know.
That area is so big, you could put two Jazzlands back there, 'cause even with the, the Jazzland park itself, and even just the, the wooded area all around there, back in, you know, that Michigan border area.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's massive land, you know, and not just, so you're talking about land, so the city basically, or the I D B Board basically owned two hundred acres, but there's also additional land available that is not owned by the Industrial Bar Board. It's owned by private individuals. So when you think about it, you could probably be looking at close to three hundred acres of land out there for, for developments. And so when you think, you could actually, we could think Disney World in a, in a way, you know what I mean? With that kinda land, maybe a miniature size of Disney World, 'cause Disney World is pretty huge. And so, um, but then we also have the Plaza, you know?
Yeah, you forgot about the Plaza.
Yeah, we have to, how can you forget about the Plaza? The Plaza is in the central heart of our.
I cut school and hid in Plaza so many times.
Did you really? The good old days, huh?
Good old days.
The good old days, remember Major Blanche?
Yep.
Uh.
You know about that, huh?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah, I'm a shopper, so I might know all the shops in, in the E.
Plaza.
Yeah, you know, the Plaza was thriving, I mean, I talked to, I was over in the Low Nine this morning, meeting with the, the L nine senior club, you know, and, and you know, it's, it's really good, great to kinda sit down when you talk to your senior citizen and they, they tell you about the history, and so my advice to many young people that are trying to get things done, make sure you know some, 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 something, something about the history, because it really helps greatly. And, and it, and, and many time, history is not, you know, if it's a bad history, you don't wanna repeat it. So that's why you gotta know your history, so, so that way you don't repeat if it's bad.
Exactly.
Right? And so, um, I get it that, you know, I remember the time at the Plaza, you know, but when you look at it now, you're now.
The Plaza was, I was Lakeside in the east.
That's right, it was the Lakeside in the east, 'cause people would say, oh, I used to drive from St. Bernard.
And they had the, the movie theater, they never got the name of it, the thing's like a dollar bill.
I didn't remember the movie theater.
'Cause when they closed that down, they opened the Grand up, the Grand movie theater on the side, that big building on the side, that was a movie theater.
Yeah, see, I didn't remember, I think when the theater came, maybe I was gone by that time, and then when I, um, but I remember before I left, the, the Plaza was there, it was booming. You remember the old days when they, when Coca-Cola shirts, we used to have shirts that said Coca-Cola?
Yeah, I have a picture of one.
Yeah, oh, really?
I was, I, about eight years old, my cousin, and I had a Coca-Cola sweater.
That was like the, the baddest thing to have, right? Yes, Coca-Cola shirt, sweatshirts and shirts and stuff like that. You know, I think the Plaza is prime, it's at, you know, empty for a while now, you know? I, I really believe that we gotta think of a catalyst of, of, uh, type of business that could lure in people. So when you think about it, while we do have a, a large, we're the size of Lake Charles, but even this size, we also need to bring in a type of business that could also bring other people in to our areas.
Spend money, correct.
Yes, so we gotta, there's several things, you know, um, we gotta bring in jobs. You know, we, you know, when you, when you drive around, you have a lot of young folks that are not working, and if we have jobs, opportunity available in a district, then that gives them an opportunity to go to work and not be on the street doing nonsense stuff. You know, so I think key to helping resolve, because, you know, my background is not criminal justice, is not, definitely not crime fighting, but I believe as a city councilperson, that I'm gonna focus on the economic development, creating jobs, and that in turn will help address the crime issue, because when people are engaged and working, they're not out on the street committing crimes.
You mean not working, you tired, sleeping?
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Get injured to go back to work.
That's right.
So if you, if you just, uh, I mean, I know it's like kinda crazy, but for like what it east in the Low Night War was before Hurricane Katrina and where is that now, like, how long do you think, four years, five years before it gets?
It's gonna take, it's gonna take a minute or two.
About in a decade, almost, I think.
Yeah, and I don't want people to get discouraged, but we gotta start, you guys, we gotta start, we haven't started yet.
Exactly.
So we gotta start and.
I mean, a decade, you think about it, it's long, it's not long.
Yeah.
You look back like, wow.
It's already, right?
It's happened already.
But we gotta start, and, and, and I'm okay with starting that, because I can't just be in this seat and keep complaining about what hasn't happened. I gotta focus on moving this district forward.
I mean, even starting, your name's still attached to it.
Yeah.
Because your name's attached to the start.
I'm not worried about the title, I'm not worried about getting credits. I really believe that, you know, somebody has to start it, and, and we have, and since I'm gonna be the new city councilperson, I'm gonna start, um, making sure that we start talking about the future and not so much of the past. And, but we gotta build for the next generation, right? Because if I build for, and no disrespect to our senior citizen, but if I build for our senior citizen and not for the youth, then who's gonna sustain it when the senior citizen is gone?
Move on, exactly.
Yeah, you know, and so, but we definitely wanna create a space for everybody to have a space to feel like they're part of it, you know? Um, so, you know, we're diverse, a very diverse community, so we also wanna make sure that their people feel like they're part of this community. So not just the age, but then you gotta look at the cultural concept of it, you know? Um, creating a space where people can display their culture, because culture is growth, you know, and so, but yeah, so, you know, we gotta work hard out, ain't I lie to you? But you know what, if everybody in this district and beyond take the initiative of, of owning this community and playing a very active role, a very positive active role, um, we may be able to even see some sort of growth before that decade arrives, you know, but it all, it just can't be just me, it has to be everybody.
Yeah, like no matter what the title is, no matter if you, a housewife or hardworking dad, it doesn't matter. But like you said, even the three-one, three-one-one number, I never knew that existed.
Yeah, three-one-one is around for you just to call and just report stuff, you know, and then that way, yeah. And like I say, it's, it's basically, it's an accountability method to make sure that we put our, uh, city agency accountable. So if you don't call and report it, then no one's gonna, no, no one's gonna be.
Know that it's something.
Wrong.
That's wrong, exactly.
That's right.
That make a lot of sense.
Yep.
I'm glad you talking about that, 'cause I'm gonna use it.
Okay, good, definitely.
A pile of tires in the corner somewhere.
Call three-one-one, yeah, and, and you don't even have to tell them their name, you know? I think the key is to get everybody to report it. Now, once they reported and things are not being done, that's where my role come in and say, you know what? Three-one-one, you know, I have people calling in, how come we're not being addressed, and it's documented, so it's not per se, people say this and people say that, because one could say, well, no one called it in, with the three-one-one system, it's documented that you called it in.
So it's, yeah, so it's proof, that they was calling.
Yep, and then hopefully, you know, hopefully, uh, be less people calling in, and when you have less people calling in, that means that things are getting done. You know, but right now, I need everybody to help, you know, if you're not able to resolve it, but at least you could resolve it by reporting it, when you see people.
So that's, that's, you think that'd be like, um, like, what's the, what you, what you think is like the most important thing to get everybody to have to help? Three-one-one to be a?
I think that, and then, and take, you know, we're, I'm hosting a citywide, a district-wide cleanup on April the twenty-first.
Uh, April twenty-first?
First, Saturday, it's a Saturday, I want everybody to come out, block that day out, and just say, you know what? Uh, you know, what I'm gonna do as a citizen, I can't give money, but I could give time.
Time, exactly.
You know, I, I'll, I'll block out that Saturday morning from eight to twelve, I'm gonna come out of my neighborhood. If my neighborhood is already clean, I'm gonna come out to the main, the, the business corridor or the median of, of my neighborhood, and I'm gonna pick up trash.
It's like clean your neighborhood.
Yeah, clean your area, I'm not asking you to go to somebody else's neighborhood.
Exactly.
Take ownership, yeah, if every, if every neighborhood does that, can you imagine how clean we will be?
Yeah, some neighborhoods actually do that.
Yeah, exactly, and, and I wanna thank those neighborhoods that are doing it. But then if, if, if your neighborhood is clean, you know what, maybe you could take a group of your neighbor and go to another neighborhood that has predominantly all seniors living, that needs that assistance. I'm pretty sure we know a few seniors that, that don't live in our neighborhood, can't come out and help, but, you know, but, uh, but I don't wanna exclude our seniors. They could still come out and provide water, they could still come out and tell us what to do, 'cause you know, they're good at that.
Get that trash, boy.
I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding, but I, but I, but if everybody said, you know, twice a year, 'cause I'm gonna host this twice a year for the next four year, okay? That I'm gonna block out that two Saturday, I'm gonna give that to my neighborhood, you know, at a minimum. Now, if I'm able to do more, great, I'll do, once a month, I'll pick up the trash in my neighborhood. But at a minimum, what I'm asking people to do is block out at least two Saturday, I'm letting you know the first Saturday now.
April twenty-fourth.
Saturday, April the twenty-first, now if it.
Twenty-first?
Twenty-first.
I'm sorry, twenty-first, I said twenty-fourth, twenty-first.
Now, if it rains on the twenty-first, we're gonna do it on the following Saturday, April the twenty-eighth, okay? But if everybody go out and come out, get your gloves, get trash bag, you know, what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna work to get some resources into where we're gonna have big dumpsters set up, to where people can bring their large.
Large trash, and.
Yeah, you know how, you know, yeah, we don't have, I don't know if you know, but it's hard for people to throw large pieces.
And I will send it myself, because that's why you have a lot of just trash hanging around, because we have an old sofa, like, you know. And I will send it myself, because that's why you have a lot of just trash hanging around, because we have an old sofa, like, you know, what you gonna do with it? I'm guilty of it, I threw my sofa one time in somebody else's dumpster, when I was moving.
At least you put in a dumpster.
So I pulled, you had a a crew, we doing a house. And when nighttime fall, we threw any dumpster. Throw it on the side, I ain't wanna bring on shelf or bring it in Michigan, or bring it in
And that's what we've been getting, is the fact that people saying that they don't have a place to dump, but that doesn't mean that you dump out the street. However, we do need to create a space for people to throw their large items. You know, when you don't have that space, then people becomes very creative. And I'll say they being creative and reference to where they throw their dumpsters, so, yeah, so it, Saturday, April the twenty first. You know, let's, every, if, and this is like two weeks, two months from now.
Time to plan.
Time to plan, let's block that morning out, let's get our gloves out, let's get some trash back. If everybody bring out six bags, six heavy-duty bags, and say, my goal is that within the next four hours, I'm gonna fill these six bags up. Can you imagine, can you imagine the amount of trash that we could get out of District E?
I think that'd be nice. I mean, that'd that'd be nice.
Yeah, and like I said, I'll do my part of getting large dumpsters. You know, we even talked about getting some partners to come be in and actually have a a dump truck that drive around to this and pick up
You can't really get it to the dumpster, so the truck will pass and pick it up.
Pick it up and then dump it there, so we're also, but you know, I gotta piece all these partners together. You know, I don't have a budget as a city council right now, as a city council elect. Things that I'm doing are basically my own time, but I don't wanna wait until May seventh. You know, we've been working, talking to people, and another thing I'm doing is I've been hosting coffee and conversations. So coffee and conversation is is where people come and they tell me, you know, they're, give me some feedback, give me some thoughts. Find out what we're doing in the district, I'm making myself accessible, so I'm hosting one another coffee and conversation next Saturday at the New Orleans East Library on the seventeenth, from ten to eleven thirty.
Anybody's welcome to come.
And if everybody's welcome to come, as to me, I ask that, when you come, let's come with a positive mind. Let's come saying that, you know what, it is a new day in District E, it's a new day in eastern New Orleans. And we are gonna work together as a team and to move our district forward. And then I'm gonna have another coffee and conversation, it's gonna be on Wednesday, March the twentieth, from at six o'clock.
Same location?
No, it's gonna be at Maria Goretti Church. Correct, so so I'm really, I'm being very sincere and proactive about making myself accessible. And I think you mentioned, I do Facebook Live.
Yeah, I actually was on a few of them.
Yeah, on on Sunday at seven P M, so people can chime in, if you're unable because you have a busy schedule and you're not able to attend any of the coffee and conversation, you could actually get on Facebook Live with me, they they could like my page, you know, councilwoman hyphen elect Cindy Winn. Like my page, cuz I post stuff up there in reference to what we're working on as well. But the Facebook Live is like another way, is like a coffee and conversation. And so I let people know what I've been working on, and then you could ask your question, and I do respond, if I don't have an answer, I'll tell you.
Oh, yeah, she responds, she would little with me. And you responded back real fast, like, wow, she really responded.
You just got lucky, cuz I was on my phone trying to, cuz what I do at night more is is that, when I get home, I actually respond to everybody, it depends on the day, if I'm working, I may not respond to you right away. But at night, I'll respond, even if I don't have an answer, I'll be like, let me check into this, let me get back to you, if you don't hear from me in the next two days, hit me back again, so that way I remember, cuz I do, I mean, on an average, I get now about at least a hundred texts per day.
Sometime it get overwhelming and then
So don't, I don't want people to feel like, oh, she didn't respond, so she's she's not, she doesn't care about me. Oh, please don't ever feel that way, that's something that, that's not Cindy Winn. I genuinely want to help everybody, but I also wanna make sure that people have ownership. I can't help you if you're not willing to help yourself. Okay, I will be a partner with everybody, as long as they're willing to to help themselves and and be able to participate. You know, we gotta make sacrifices until we get kinda like our glory day, right? You know, cuz I remember when my parents first came to America, we didn't have much, we didn't have money. My parents, all they had was just their bare hand, we lived in an affordable housing complex uh with assisted living of, you know, without housing, and my parents went to work, save up, and we made beaucoup sacrifices, you know. And now, we're not like the wealthiest family, but we okay. You know, we have our own home, we, my parents own their own home, I own my own home now. Most of us got college degree, you know, so we made sacrifices, and I be, you know, and I know people make sacrifices every day. You know, I get that. Oh, thank you, yeah, I I just, yeah, I just really believe in it, and but I always believe that we gotta continue to stay positive. Don't let the negative thing pour us down. You know, we got so, we got too far now, you know, as a community. You know, and we gotta keep going, because all the work that our forefathers have done for us, we can't just say we're gonna give up. You know, and communication.
That's key, communication is key to everything.
That's right, that's right.
Well, it been nice talking to you, Ms. Cynthia.
Cindy, Cindy Winn.
Cindy?
Cindy Winn. You know, I got my name from Cindy Lauper, right?
Who's that?
You don't know Cindy Lauper? Cindy Lauper is a singer, a famous singer in the eighties, she's like, girls just wanna have fun.
I knew the song, but I didn't know
I grew up idolizing Cindy Lauper, and that's how I got my name Cindy. Yeah, so you know, as a as an immigrant, when I became a U S citizen, um in nineteen ninety-three, the government allowed me to change my la- my first name, change my name for free. So I didn't, I picked, so my 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 legal name now is Cindy Swan, X U A N. Swan is my given name at birth, so Cindy Swan Winn, but people just call me Cindy Winn. Yeah, gotta say it together, Cindy Winn.
Cindy Winn.
Cindy Winn.
There you go. You have a fun name to go with, you know, with with you going, you you gonna make awesome, awesome. It all makes sense.
Yeah, oh, no, you gotta have fun, that's that's me, I'm I'm not, it's not gonna be all boring, dry out, I have to have fun. And so don't think that because I'm having fun that I'm not doing, I'm not working, I am working, you know, that's part of my
That's part of work, you gotta have fun to work.
Yeah, you gotta, can't, it can't, it can't be all uptight and just, you know, it has to
It make you feel more human.
Yes, yes, for sure.
Well, thank you again. Appreciate it, and and thank you again.
Thank you so much, all right?